I'd like to call a meeting to order. This is the March 18th meeting of the Planning Commission. A roll call, please.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Vice Chair Marshall. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Sammet.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra. And Commissioner Biassadi.
Okay, I'd like to ask Commissioner Chase to lead us into the play.
There you go. Boy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited in justice for all.
Are there any communications?
Chair Peterson, no, there are no additional communications this evening.
Very good. Item number two is public comment on items not on the agenda. If anyone too wants to comment on something that is not on the agenda, this is the time for you. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number three, announcement of conflict of interest. Do any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest? No? Okay. Item number four, conduct of business. We are to receive a report on the zoning code amendments to implement four programs in the city's housing element. This is an informational meeting and no action is required for this item. Director Waltering.
Chair Peterson and Commissioners, tonight our long-range planning manager, Mark Sullivan, has a report on the housing element update. We've been working on the housing element for this cycle. There are still a number of items that need to be completed for this current cycle, 2007 through 2014, and Mr. Sullivan will give us an update of those items that yet need to be completed. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. As you will recall, at our last meeting on the 4th of this month, we reviewed the housing element update process that we started towards adopting of a new housing element at the end of this year. And part of that process is taking a look back at the current housing element and the accomplishments that we made, that the city made, in the last seven years of the housing element, and what remains to be done. And basically, there are four remaining housing program implementation actions that need to be completed in order for the current housing element to be compliant with state law. And it's important that the housing element be in compliance, not only for the obvious reason, but also because it makes us eligible for a streamlined review process in the update of the upcoming housing element. And that's important because that housing element, the upcoming housing element must be adopted by January 2015. And the normal HCD housing, the California Department of Housing and Community Development review process can take up to 120 days, so that puts a lot of extra time in the process. Whereas if we qualify for the streamlined review, the review would be approximately 60 days, which is what HCD is committed to doing. So it's really, we have a much greater likelihood of getting it done on time. And the reason it's important to get it done on time is that under the new housing element law, if the housing element is adopted on time, we start a new eight-year cycle for the following housing element. So it goes from 2014 to 2022. However, if we don't make the deadline, then the penalty is that you have a four-year cycle. So you would have to do it again in 2018. So there's really a strong incentive to get this done now. And as far as the zone code amendments that we're discussing, these were all considered, included in the current housing element. They were reviewed by you, the programs themselves. They were approved by both Planning Commission and the City Council. So what we're doing now is getting around to actually adopting these as part of the, within the zoning code. And there are basically four items that will come before you as draft ordinances in the next month to two months. One of them is for providing reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities. The other is a density bonus ordinance. The third is zoning for emergency shelters. And the fourth is zoning for transitional and supportive housing. So I'll just go through briefly each one of those. And so as far as the reasonable accommodations provision goes, what this would do is it would establish a process whereby a person with disabilities could request, they could request exceptions to our zoning standards to allow changes that might not, you know, fit in with the zoning regulations. These could be for ramps, walls, handrails, lifts, that, you know, go into the setbacks or some other thing that physically prevents, you know, the reasonable accommodation from occurring. So we would establish a process to do that. And that would be within the zoning code. The second item is the density bonus ordinance. And density bonus law was established by the state to encourage the development of affordable housing. And basically, what it allows, actually, it's been in place since 1979, but it went through a major change, major changes in 2004. So what it does is it allows up to 35 percent density bonus, meaning an increase in the number of units that would normally be allowed under zoning for projects that provide affordable housing. And it's a sliding scale. So it starts at about 20 percent and ramps up to 35 percent. And these are now within state law, so they exist, but we're also required to adopt them within our own zoning ordinance. And what that does is it gives us a little bit more control over what happens in San Bruno versus just, you know, doing exactly what the state code says. So I mentioned the density, the bonuses. The ordinance also, and I think this is something that you're going to be really interested in seeing, is that it requires granting of concessions to a developer, one to three concessions. And those concessions can be, they're generally to development regulations. They could be for setbacks, reduced setbacks, increased FARs. It even includes height. So there are a number of these concessions, and there'd be sort of a menu of those that will be presented in the draft ordinance. So as I mentioned, that allows us to have more local control of how this works. So that's summary of the density bonus ordinance. Third is zoning for emergency shelters. As you may recall, there was, there's a bill called SB 2, which basically requires every community in the state to create a zoning where emergency shelters are allowed by right with not, no discretionary permit. If they follow all the, you know, the rules, the regulations within the code, then they can produce the house, the emergency shelter by right. And in, back in 2009, both the Planning Commission and the City Council approved the general plan, the 2009 general plan transit-oriented development zone as a location for emergency shelters in San Bruno. And that basically runs along El Camino from Angus Avenue up to 380, and then on San Bruno Avenue from Elm to the railroad tracks. So that would be the only area that emergency shelters would be allowed. And the other point there is that San Bruno was required to identify an area that could accommodate at least an emergency shelter or shelters that would accommodate at least 32 beds, because that was what was identified in the homeless census and survey that was done in 2009 by the county. Fourth is regarding transitional and supportive housing. And this item is actually quite straightforward. The state law simply requires that transitional and supportive housing be treated as a residential use within residential zones. And so what we are planning to do is to amend the definition of special care facilities to include transitional and supportive housing. And as you know, residential care, special residential care facilities are allowed in residential zones now already. So by including the transitional supportive housing, that will fulfill, you know, that So that pretty much covers the four items that you will be seeing in actual draft ordinance language in the next 30 to 60 days. And so we're working on those, on, you know, draft ordinances right now. And as I said, I think within 30 to 60 days, we'll bring them to you for review. And hopefully, we can get these adopted this summer and qualify for the streamlined review process and so that the housing element update can go smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions for this subject?
Yes.
Commissioner Biassadi.
When you say emergency shelters, can you define that a little more clearly for me?
Yeah, it's homeless, homeless housing. So basically, the emergency shelter is shelter that, you know, is for people for a stay of no longer than six months, but it's meant to be, to meet immediate emergency needs of homeless people.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? I have one question. You mentioned that the accomplishing this on a timely basis is important, not only to meet state law for these requirements, but to support the shorter time period of the housing element. Do you have a proposed schedule that gives calendar dates for each of these activities, such as the draft?
We're working on a schedule, and I do have a draft schedule, which I can, I think we can provide to you, you know, probably in the next week, and put it up on the website as well. But we can distribute it to commissioners in the next week.
But do all of the people who are working on this know that schedule?
When you say all of the people, what do you mean?
Is it just yourself who's writing the drafts?
Yes, yeah, we're, yes. The process, I think, as I mentioned before, is we're working through the 21 elements, the countywide 21 elements process. So it's sort of, it's a collaborative process where all the cities in the county are working together. And we're, the draft housing elements will be sent as a group to HCD. And so they're aware, so HCD is involved in this as well. So we're working within their, within the required timeframe to get this done, you know, by the deadline.
Oh, great. Thank you. Any other comments on this subject? Thank you. The next item is item 5A, which is a public hearing, 416, 424 Kensington Avenue. It's a request for a use permit to allow the construction of an addition to an existing two-family dwelling which exceeds the .55 floor area ratio guideline. The proposed is .58. This is per 12230B2 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to construct an addition to the existing duplex at 416, 424 Kensington Avenue. Now, the site is located on the north side of Kensington Avenue and is currently developed with an attached duplex consisting of two separate living units. The existing units are mirror images of one another. Each unit contains two bedrooms, one bathroom, a living room, dining room, and a one-car garage. The applicant is proposing a second-story addition. As stated, the units are mirror image of one another, and the proposed changes to each unit are exactly the same. The second-floor expansion consists of two bedrooms and one bathroom for each unit. The first floor in each unit will be modified to accommodate an internal stairwell that will create the existing living area with the proposed living area. Additionally, the existing kitchen and dining room will be relocated in both units. If approved and constructed, each unit would contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Each unit would have 1,464 square feet of living area with a 278 square foot one-car garage. The Architecture Review Committee did review this project at the February meeting. The Architecture Review Committee forwarded the project onto the Planning Commission with three specific staff recommendations. Those were to incorporate consistent trim on all existing and proposed windows, to include a basic landscaping plan, and to submit a statement identifying the green building measures that will be implemented at the time of building permits middle. The applicant has addressed all of these items. The project does require a use permit because the addition is exceeding the .55 FAR guideline. The proposal is coming in at .58. The proposed expansion meets the lot coverage, setback, height, and parking requirements of the zoning district. Staff finds that the character of the duplex is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of a variety of different residential land use types. Within this neighborhood, it's located in the R2 zoning district. There are single-family homes, there are duplexes, and there are multifamily residential structures. Staff also finds that the addition is consistent with the residential design guidelines. The second story is setback from the first story below on three of the four elevations. That would be the front and both sides. The rear elevation is partially flush with the first story below, and a portion of that rear elevation overhangs the first floor by two feet. The addition will also incorporate a stucco finish and an asphalt roof, which will match the existing home. I'd also like to point out that the addition does incorporate a hip roof from the front elevation, so it really does help reduce the overall mass of the addition. Staff did send a courtesy notice and the required 300-foot legal notice to property owners. No comments were received. Overall, staff supports the project and finds that the addition is consistent with the residential design guidelines, and we would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the request subject to findings of fact, 1 through 6, and conditions of approval, 1 through 26. Be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the commission for staff before the public hearing?
Just one.
Commissioner Biassadi.
In looking at the conditions of approval, condition number six, residential use as a single-family residence, is that inconsistent with this application? Or what's the intention with that one?
You know, that's a good, that's a good catch. It should be modified to say this residence shall be used as a duplex, so we can go ahead and modify that.
Thank you very much, if you would correct that.
Could you repeat what you just said? How it's going to read?
The condition should be modified and should read, "The residence shall be used only as a duplex." So we're going to eliminate only as a single-family residential dwelling unit. Thank you.
And is it of any value to address that each half of the duplex be operated as a single-family residential unit?
I don't think it's necessary to add that specific language.
Oh, okay, thank you. One other question before I open the public hearing. On the second floor, there's an uncommon facade articulation. That is to say, the second floor overhangs the first floor. There's no deck in association with the second floor that would support it going out, so it just sort of is unusual that it's in, the rooms overhang decks below. Is that something that you considered as to how it might comport with the housing design guidelines?
We did look at, we did look at that, and the residential design guidelines do recommend stepping in the second floor from the first story below. And for this specific proposal, the three of the four elevations are stepped in from the first story below. The front elevation has a bearing setback, I believe, ranging from eight feet, four inches to 22 feet, eight inches. And the second story left and right side elevation is also setback five feet, four inches to 18 feet, two inches. While the rear does overhang two feet, staff does not find this to be inconsistent with the residential design guidelines, and we do find that the overall proposal as a whole is consistent with the guidelines.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing.
One comment.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Johnson.
Just, there's a couple on item number six and number seven. Number six, the second portion of what our commissioner indicated, was no portion of the residence shall be rented out, a secondary residential dwelling. It is a duplex, so does the whole language in that number six need to be looked at, or just that first sentence, just that one word, "single-family"?
I would say just the first sentence. Really, what that's saying is that no portion of each, so there's two units on site, so no, each unit wouldn't be able to create a second residential dwelling unit within that, within that existing unit, essentially. So there can't be three units on site. Two units is the max.
But when it says no portion of the residence, so it conveys to me as one.
Maybe no portion of the duplex. We could modify it that way.
And then it's singular in number seven, "the garage."
Good catch. Both garages. We can modify it that way.
Any other commissioner questions? I'd like to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to step forward first, if you would, and make any presentation you like. Give your name and street name for the record, please.
My name is Don McClintock, 373 Mastick Avenue. And my question regarding this gentleman's process is that how many parking spaces are there going to be accommodated off-street for a three-bedroom versus a two-bedroom? That's going to increase the parking. The street Kensington is also a very crowded street right now.
Sir, as a point of information, I, excuse me for interrupting, but we would like to, we'd like to see the applicant first, so you would have the benefit of hearing their presentation.
Perfect, thank you.
And is the applicant here? Please give your name and street name and make any presentation you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Carla Tehankey. This is my husband, Brian Oblong. We are co-owners of the duplex. The third owner is George Garcia, who could not make it today, so we apologize for that. This is at the 416424 Kensington Avenue duplex. So when, our proposal for this application is when we first purchased the home back in 2007, we intended to live there long-term. And over the last seven years, you know, we started a family, and rather than moving to a three-bedroom, two-bath home and building our family upon, in another location, we actually just wanted to go ahead and build upon our current location because we do love the neighborhood so much, and our neighbors we have become very close with, and they have been there a long time as well. So if I could actually also address this gentleman's question in regards to parking. So we live on the 416 Kensington side and intending to build from two bedrooms to three because we currently have one child and we would like to have a second, so each one would have their own room. And then the duplex, the 424 side, that is our other friend, who is essentially building so that everything is symmetrical. He would also like a bigger home, and he can have his own space for that. But we don't intend to have additional cars until these children turn 16, or they move out or something. But in the very near, I guess, in the next 16 years, there is no intent to have additional cars. But we do have, where our garage actually houses the car as well as the driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commission questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, are there any other members of the public who would like to ask a question? Was yours addressed all right, sir? Did you have any other questions?
I did. The corridor, the transit corridor program seems to have evaporated, and it was supposed to be on the ballot last November, and no one seems to know what's going on or where it's at, or has it been abolished, or what's going on with that. Can you tell us where we're at with it?
Let me ask staff to address that. Staff?
Through the chair, we'd be happy to respond to that question. The transit corridors plan itself, as you know, was adopted last year in 2013 in February. The plan is in effect. There are aspects of that plan to be fully implemented that will require a vote of the people, the vote of the people here in San Bruno. And that pertains to aspects regarding height, overall building height within the transit corridors plan area, residential densities, and being allowed to have above-ground parking garages. But the plan itself was adopted, is in effect, can be, and is being implemented. But we do expect to go forward, as the gentleman indicated, to bring a measure before the voters to look at those three aspects: building height, above-ground garages, and residential densities. We've been working with a number of consultants, kind of looking at upcoming election periods, looking at the issues in the plan itself. We have not decided on a specific election or date to bring this matter forward. It is correct, we were looking at perhaps last November. Obviously, we did not do that. We're looking at possibly later on this year, possibly this coming November, but again, that's under evaluation. But the plan itself is adopted, it's being implemented. We certainly hope, as we mentioned at an earlier meeting, a previous meeting, we certainly hope to bring this ballot measure to the voters. We feel it's very, very important to pass that measure so that the transit corridors plan can be fully implemented. And the benefits of the plan in terms of providing some incentives, financial and economic incentives for development and redevelopment, we believe are really through seeing that ballot measure move forward successfully. So we certainly will want to bring that forward. We don't know exactly when that's going to go forward at this time.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on this application? Please step to the podium and give your name and street name.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Xavier. I live in 581 Elm. And I have a follow-up question on the transit quarter. So you said that there's some pending items that you guys are evaluating. Can you be a little more specific about what that is in terms of when you'd be ready to move forward and for the election?
Again, through the chair, in response to the questions posed, as I mentioned, the areas, the specific areas have to do with building heights within the transit corridors plan area. The plan area is about 150 acres. It pertains to key commercial corridors here in San Bruno. For example, our downtown street, San Mateo Avenue, Huntington, El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue being examples. The increased heights right now are provisions of our code limit building height in those areas to 50 feet or three stories. The measure that would go before the voters would allow for increasing building heights in various locations within the plan area. And those increased heights would range from being allowed to go to, say, 55 feet and four stories on San Mateo Avenue to as high as seven- high as seven stories near the Caltrain station in that vicinity, and 65 feet along El Camino Real. So it depends on the area, the specific area, within the overall transit corridors plan. And so that's one aspect, looking at increased building heights. Another would be to allow for above-ground parking garages within, again, just the plan area, the 150 acres, the corridors, the commercial corridors, just in those areas. And then also looking at allowing for increased residential densities. And these residential densities have to do with the fact that ordinance 1284 that's in effect, which was adopted in 1977, restricted residential densities in certain areas to the densities that were in effect, the residential densities that were in effect in 1974. So we would allow for increased density. So that's a little more detail, and the economic and financial incentives that we're talking about, obviously, that as you allow for increased building heights, increased residential densities, allow for above-ground parking garages, the land values, the potential development opportunities for these properties increases, and we believe that would provide incentive to redevelop, develop and redevelop certain properties within the plan area. I can't be too much more specific about when the ballot measure would go forward. We would hope that perhaps November of this year, that would be the soonest that we could bring that forward. And again, that's something that, you know, we're evaluating, and as I say, evaluating, you know, the city council, the city manager, staff are evaluating, you know, that, that issue, and as soon as we have a good idea as to when we can go forward with this, we'll certainly let people know. There, there's really an important educational aspect to this. The people here are right. The, the plan was adopted, and, and there hasn't been a lot of discussion about this important, really important, plan for the community and its merits. And I think part of what we need to do is to kind of bring this forward again and talk about the plan and, and what it means for San Bruno, and the importance of seeing it fully implemented. So that's, that public outreach component is certainly something that we need to do in advance of bringing such an important measure before the voters. So that's a little more detail. Again, at this point, the soonest this would come forward would be November of this year, that's not a certainty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question. Any other members of the public have a question on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing over and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Matt, in regard to this gentleman's questions about parking, I noticed the zoning requirements require four coverage spaces, and I don't see a request for a parking exemption.
Okay, so regarding the number of required parking spaces, the applicant is proposing to maintain the existing one-car garage for each unit, which is allowed without a use permit when the living area is less than 1,825 square feet.
So we're looking at each unit separately, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Commissioner Chase.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve use permit 1401 based on findings of fact one through six with the correction and conditions of approval one through 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. Moving on to item 5B, 548 San Mateo Avenue. It's a request for a use permit and parking exception to allow a martial arts studio within the CBD Central Business District for chapters 1296, 120C7, and 12101 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. As stated, the use permit and parking exception is required to establish a martial arts studio within the CBD zoning district. The site itself is located on the east side of San Mateo Avenue and is currently developed with a commercial building consisting of two separate storefronts. The proposed martial arts studio will occupy a 2,500-square-foot space. The applicant plans to offer a variety of classes ranging from karate, taekwondo, boxing, and flex training. The general hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The applicant is also proposing to incorporate a retail component. They'll display and sell product lines really related to the martial arts industry. The retail component will have the same hours of operation, which would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. As stated, the use permit is required to establish a martial arts studio within the CBD zoning district. The intent of the use permit process is to really evaluate the proposed use in relation to the existing environment, and to ensure that it won't have a negative effect on those land uses in the overall neighborhood. Staff finds that the proposed use will be a positive addition to the downtown environment. Classes are offered throughout the entire day, which will bring greater foot traffic to San Mateo Avenue, which will benefit the existing businesses downtown. Additionally, the applicant will incorporate a retail component. The actual retail component will consist of 500 square feet and will be dedicated to, obviously, retail sales. The retail hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Staff finds that the proposed hours of operation are consistent with other retail land uses on San Mateo Avenue. The retail, retail component will create an inviting storefront, which is really important in any downtown environment. Regarding parking, the martial arts studio requires three more parking spaces than the previous retail use. There are two city-owned parking lots located to the rear of the subject site. Those two lots, when combined, amount to 147 parking spaces. Staff has previously conducted a number of parking studies in the downtown area, and the results of our analysis and survey indicate that both parking lots are underutilized and were not near the 85% occupancy rate that staff considers when determining if an area is parking impacted. Therefore, staff finds that the parking needs for the martial arts studio will be met with the two nearby city-owned parking lots. Staff did send a public notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the site. We did not receive any comments regarding the proposed use. Staff would recommend that the planning commissioner approve the use permit and parking exception request based on findings of fact one through five, and conditions of approval one through 19. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Through the chair. Commissioner Johnson.
I just wanted to check if, if you had the opportunity to, to speak with the applicants about the Saturday hours. I thought I heard you say 2:00, and knowing that new businesses and the type of services they provide, they might be requested for longer hours, which would mean it needs to come back to the planning commission or to the department, I'm not quite sure what the process is. However, I just thought I would just check in about that.
If the applicant decided to expand the hours of operation, that's something that we could look at internally at staff level, wouldn't necessarily require a planning commission review.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other commission questions for the staff? Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to open the public hearing, ask the applicant to please step to the podium, give your name and street name, and any presentation you might like to make. Thank you.
Commissioners, excuse me, my name is Peter Johnson. I live at 150 Balboa Way in San Bruno. I currently operate my business at 731 Canes Avenue. I've been a business owner and operator here in San Bruno for the last 22 years. This is not a new business, although it's a new process for me to go through this, but I'm actually really thrilled because, you know, over two decades I've spent serving the communities here and the families here. And the centennial celebrating in, in December is kind of a great time to launch to go on San Mateo Avenue. I wake up very early before the chickens, and I, I drive down El Camino, and every time I drive by San Mateo Avenue, the lights that's lit up is just absolutely beautiful, about 4:30 in the morning, and I just think it's, it's majestic to be able to go by that downtown area, and I just, I've been successful for the last 20 years creating my business, and every time I've moved, I've been in two locations. One was right next to the Rib Shack, and at our current location, at 731 Canes, and I've had a positive impact with both of those blocks every time we've been there. We promote a positive lifestyle, we promote an active lifestyle, which translates to people shopping more, being outside more, and really enjoying and being an active part of the community. I'm excited for what, what lies ahead with the centennial. There's a lot of celebration stuff that's currently happening that I'm kind of involved in, and I think moving our business to that spot is not only ideal, but it's very timely. I'm just in a situation where I do need to kind of move from 731 Canes, and am enthusiastic to move down to San Mateo Avenue because I've seen the improvements that are going on there, and I, I think we're a great fit for the, where it wants to go, with the farmer's market, obviously with the Posey parade being quite traditional, but other events happening down there, so I appreciate your listening. I'm happy to answer any questions about our operations. Specifically to address Commissioner Johnson's thought on the hours, the reason why the Saturday hours are posted as that is after 2:00 p.m., we have seminars and other things that are a little bit more episodic in nature, where they can't be specifically, well, every single Saturday, but I would say two to three times a month. We do have events that go on in the evening hours, 5, 6 o'clock, although it's not part of our posted hours. It's something where we might have guest instructors doing presentations or classes for people there.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
So that speaks, that you are using the facility after the 2:00, and, and of different, you know, avenues, which is certainly your choice and privilege, and so that speaks to the fact that possibly having that, those hours changed at this time might be to a benefit, so something for you to consider.
Wonderful.
Doesn't change our, anything on our end, but would like you to know that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd be happy to change that if it, if it, you know, was necessary, certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on this application? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and a possible motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
If there's no further discussion, I would like to make a, a motion to approve use permit 14-005 and parking exception 14001, based on the findings of facts one through five and conditions of approval one through 19. There was some, you know, discussion regarding the hours, so I don't know if that should be part of this motion or not, but certainly, if you can give me direction on that, Commissioner.
I think many businesses have activities that are not necessarily pre-planned or scheduled in advance, so I think unless, unless they're operating on a regular basis, I think, I don't think there would be anything wrong with what they're planning.
Fine. Then my motion's done.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments on the question? Okay, call for a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you very much. Item, moving on to discussion, item number six. Six A is city staff's discussion.
So I just want to cover a few staff follow-up items. At the January planning commission meeting, staff was asked to follow up on two separate items. Item number one was regarding a potential limousine business located within a single-family dwelling on Parkview Drive, and the second item was an electronic sign located at 1590 El Camino Real. Staff did forward both of these items to the code enforcement division. Regarding the potential limousine business, the code enforcement division recently issued a notice of violation. This matter is currently being reviewed by the code enforcement division, and staff will provide an update regarding the status of this case at a future planning commission meeting. Regarding the electronic sign at 1590 El Camino Real, the code enforcement department did issue a notice of violation. The sign was flashing and included off-site advertising, which is prohibited by the municipal code. The property took care of the violations, and the electronic sign is meeting all of the municipal code requirements, and that code enforcement case has been closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff would like to select the April 10 Architectural Review Committee. Is that correct?
That is correct, so we'd like to have three volunteers to do that. Commissioner Biassadi, Commissioner Chase, third one, please. Commissioner Sammet, thank you.
Okay. Item 6B is planning commission discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
I was just kind of curious, curious as to, I mean, I know we had a meeting on March 4th, and it wasn't a true planning commission meeting, but there was no minutes or anything that was, you know, generated from that. And I just kind of thought we probably should, there was obviously discussion or, you know, the presentation should have maybe, perhaps, we should have some form of written communication that that took place. What's your thought?
Through the chair, if I could respond. That was a regular planning commission meeting. We know we often don't meet on that first Tuesday, but it, it is considered a regular meeting, and we will have minutes. We didn't have time to get those minutes put together. You will receive minutes for your review and editing, and we hope to get those to you at the next meeting. So we'll get those to you for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other commission discussion?
Chair, if I could, one, one quick comment. Just, just to mention to the full commission that there is a Planning Commissioners Academy here locally in Burlingame next week, and Chair Peterson and myself are going to go to that. There'll be an opportunity for updates on such things as SEQA, conductive meetings, planning commission meetings, design review, roles and responsibilities of the planning commission. So it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of next week in Burlingame, so we'll be attending that, and we will share back information with you, materials and so forth from that meeting. Thank you.
On that subject, I'll be attending that with Director Waltering, and it's my plan to gather as much material as I can and PDF it and post it on the web, so the entire commission can benefit from it. I haven't been personally to League of Cities Planning Commission presentation for a number of years, and I suspect that's true for many of the members, so I think it'd be valuable to make an aggressive approach to sharing that information. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll declare the meeting adjourned.
You can be a little bit more aggressive.